I'm ready if you are, Jimmy. So, tonight is a, should be the stakeholder meeting. That the consultants would, that, that the city and the consultants are doing with the Planning Commission. There's been several stakeholder meetings so far. This is actually the last one. So we met with Economic Development Advisory Board. There's an internal hospital working group made up of staff members. Ed Guarano's on that committee and we have the, the chief of, of the fire department and the ambulance corps. I'm trying to think if that was, if that's everyone, but basically this is the last one. And what we've done throughout is we started with that listening session and that with the whole, with the entire public. And then we had maybe some more specific questions for some of the earlier groups. And then we boiled that down into some actual, let's say, design ideas. So the whole site won't be designed by the city. What we're putting together is form-based code. So what that'll look like, it's zoning. But we show the forms of the building. It's some, some sort of really like rudimentary design. And then what actually goes into those buildings is determined later, but it's, it's not the, it's not the, the item in the forefront. So it's not like, okay, hey, we want single-family housing. We're like, we want this look. And then we say, what, what can fit in that look, if that makes sense? So, what I plan to do tonight is I'll show some slides and I'll kind of tell you the direction that we're going in. The, the three of us can have some conversation. We can hear from, from people in the, in the audience. And then what I'll do afterwards is, since this presentation will be online, I'll put together a, I'll put together a questionnaire on Google Forms. And then each of you can email me directly with any, anything you wanted to say about the presentation in general or anything we're missing or any of the specific slides. So I think that's the best route to go. So I'll start with the presentation. The, the consultants are watching the live stream now. If they have any specific questions, they're going to, to text me. The, the plan was in the contract that they would do some of these meetings virtually, but it's kind of hard to do here. And then if we have members of the public, we can't really go across the hall for them to, to be here. So this is the, the best we do under the circumstance. So this is just a, a land use map that they had put together, basically as part of the, the beginning of their study. They do an existing condition study. I know the members in the audience were, were at the public input meeting. They, they had these on the large phone boards that were there. You'll be able to look online later to see what it is. But basically they go through, they just do an existing condition study of, of the, of the city, the surrounding area. Kind of see what, what is where. This here looks at specific sites, circulation, that sort of thing. And then in the black are the, the general, the parcels of the, the hospital site. And the subject property that we're looking at. And we're also looking at the surrounding district. So I mean, while the, while the emphasis is the hospital going away. And us needing to, to have something for that site, it's likely that this will expand to the R O district. So the R O residential office district was put in place as sort of being in support of the hospital. But for some time, even before the hospital officially announced they were going to leave, the city was already undertaking some initiatives to, to sort of recognizing that this wasn't the, the same district anymore. So one of those things were, were tax, was a tax abatement for people wanting to switch homes in this area to, back to single-family homes from offices. So we've, we've, we've done one of those just recently. Later on tonight, we have a, a discussion about a change to the R O district to allow, basically a wellness center falls under our definition of personal service shops. So there's been a change. It's been recognized for some period of time. It's continued to change. Now with the, the hospital going away, there's a real, a real need for it. The point of that whole thing was just to mention that we're looking at the entire R O district, although the emphasis is on the hospital site. This one again, I believe is, yeah, look at, at transit, just circulation and the main collectors in the city, how to get in and out. Part of this is just recognizing that coming in on Revolution, there's probably the need to make this a point of emphasis as a corridor into the city. So this is the, the first sort of, just really general map. So this looks at, at the different parcels and then, or I wouldn't even say that because there's multiple parcels in here. So it's actually looking at the different sections. So it's looking at, you know, one section on Revolution where the park is now, or the open spaces next to the parking garage, the parking garage itself. Doctors offices on Lewis Lane and Union. And then directly on Union Avenue, opening up Lodge Lane, both sides of Lodge Lane. And then both sides of Washington Street and then a small area in the back corner where, single-family housing may be possible, but it's encumbered by the critical area and stormwater management issues. That'd be kind of, not impossible, but difficult and expensive probably to overcome. So that, that may stay open space. So the point of this here, regardless of, at this moment of density, which we'll get into in a minute. For the different density types, they were looking at these, these different areas as the different uses that could go in those different areas, if that makes sense. So, the, the way that we're going with is a plan that we have currently in mind is that we're going to have some sort of, of baseline zoning. It doesn't have to be this, but it would be something, say like this. It would be something low density. So, you know, not that they, not that they would need to come to the Planning Commission for, for approval, but they would have this, as of right zoning that I think everybody would be comfortable with. It's really just a lot of single-family homes, duplexes. It's, it's, it's something almost like you would, you would see in the neighborhood that now or what was actually there prior to, prior to the hospital creating the institutional building that it's in now and buying houses for the parking lot. So, this would reestablish Union and have similar sized buildings along Union. It would reopen Lodge Lane. And then it would put similar houses on Washington, maybe that were, were on smaller lots. So something smaller in lot with, with porches. Things that you would see very similar on Washington now. So the idea would be this, again, this baseline in that more density would be, would be possible. But to get from the low density to the higher density schemes, there's certain things that they're going to have to provide. And there's going to be certain things that they're going to have to ask for from, from the city or, or a change in the zoning code. So if we go much more than this, it'll be difficult to park because we require three parking spaces per unit. So they would have to require something less. So, to get them to, to say, hey, you know, we're, we want, you know, two and a half spaces per unit or two per unit. And they'll have to come up with some acceptable way that would work. Then we would say, okay, well, we'll do that. But you know, you have to, you have to provide different things. So this is just off the, the top of my head, but there's a, a system called Lead for Neighborhoods that looks at, when you're building an infill like this, how you can make it connect and have it make sense. And so some of the things they have is that, each site would have onsite trash, onsite recycling and onsite compost, which is something you don't see. They would require a certain, a certain amount of bicycle facilities for, for parking and locking up your bike and those sorts of things. And it just depends. I mean, there's a laundry list of things. There's green energy standards for the buildings that we could implement. There's really like a number of things that, that we can look at down the road. Just the point is that we'll have some, some baseline and then there'll be the need, if we go higher than this, for some, for some trade-offs. And then we'll still need to establish what that baseline is, which will come down the road. And then also what, how much we want to trade off. So I'm going to show you some different scenarios that we've put together. And then I'll take whatever feedback from that. So again, this is low density. So there are some pictures on here and they're a little small unfortunately, but the top three are all different style of houses on, on Union Avenue now. So some are, are more grandiose than others. Some, some are more, more humble, but you see the three on top. The bottom are two examples of what they're calling twins, which would basically be a duplex unit. They're, they're showing in later versions, a form of this size that could actually have eight units. So this could be a multifamily building. This could be a duplex. And I think you see some of that now on, on Union Avenue. You have some of the old buildings there that are, are multifamily apartments. I'm not sure how many are in some of those buildings, but there's several apartments in some of those buildings. Some of them are bed and breakfast. Some of those are people's homes, just they're, they're single-family homes. So, again, the idea is to, to maybe, you know, find, find something that would fit like on the, on the, in those bottom pictures, something, doesn't have to be that, but something like that. That could be anywhere from two to eight units and look be the, be basically the same, the same building on the outside, the same form, if that makes sense. So this one is, um, let me just check. Yeah, okay. Well, okay. So there's only one medium density scenario that we have right now. So I believe this still keeps the, this still keeps the parking garage in place. Next to the parking garage, it has a couple of those twin to eight units. In the parking lot of Revolution, again, a couple twelve to eight unit, twin to eight units. Union again, still reestablished. And then behind Union, along Lodge Lane is where they're showing kind of the larger multifamily. And those could be 20 to 40 unit buildings. They're a little broken up. This again, reestablishes Lodge Lane. On the corner of Union and Lewis, it gives you the opportunity for a mixed-use building with, with some sort of retail on the bottom, which was mentioned in some of the meetings. So some sort of, some sort of retailer or commercial at the bottom that wouldn't conflict with downtown that would maybe have apartments above. And then as you start getting further back, you get into townhouse units rather than just single-family homes or duplexes. So it, it keeps the same scheme as the, the low density in a lot of ways. But just has, has larger forms. There's just bigger, bigger buildings. But again, this reopens Lodge, recognizes the, the potential need for mixed use. And, and still, you know, would be able to, while even, while being denser than what's on Washington now. This type of density would still be able to keep the character of, of what's on Washington and reconnect Washington Street as well through the parking lot. So these are some different buildings here. So I, I, yeah, I think the one on the bottom I was mentioning earlier, I'm pretty sure that, I can't tell right at the moment, but I'm pretty sure that's Haverde Grace. I confirmed that with, with Diane earlier. This is the Abbey, Abbey Burger, right? Abbey Burger and Gal, Galback Bakery at, all right. So then the top three pictures, you have the top right, which are, are new condos in Bully Rock. And then to the left of that, you have a couple, um, medium density units that have a, some interesting, interesting designs. They're, they're not your, they're not your typical, they're not what you see from condos today. These might be buildings that were, were adapted, like an adaptive reuse building. These guys are, are out of Philadelphia and they do do a lot of work in that area. So, I know you see a lot of old factories and things that have been turned into, to these type of, of kind of 20 to 40 unit buildings up there. So, you know, these are some kind of different options that would be, that you'd maybe see in these, in that space between Union, the, the houses on Union and on Lodge Lane. So this is a first, um, look at, at high density. Basically what this does is gets rid of the parking garage and puts in those, those larger units. The, the twins to, twin to eight units. There's a larger building over on, on Revolution and Union. And then instead of the two kind of 20 to 40 unit multifamily buildings, you kind of have this large building, something similar to, I guess in mass of what the hospital is now. There was some talk at one time about keeping the hospital and converting that into apartment. So you can kind of think of it as just sliding the hospital back to Lodge, Lodge Lane, reestablishing Union. Then you'd have those kind of 20 to 40 unit, buildings behind. You'd have townhomes again on, on Washington. And then behind those, they're showing some kind of retail. So there's kind of retail, so there was talk of a hotel or a grocery store or that sort of thing. So it just kind of puts that further down Revolution. But this is something of obviously a larger size with a lot more mass. This would be, this would be something in two-hundred-twenty, two-hundred-forty unit range. So here's some different buildings. I think they've designed actually some of these up there, so this would be something of what they would, what we're looking at in the high-density. So this is another version of that. In this one, the main difference is behind the multifamily, you have townhomes, but those townhomes have parking underneath, so they're probably four stories with a floor, two floors of parking underneath, and then two floors above. And then in the middle of all those townhouses would be a raised courtyard on top of the garage. So it's just a different way to look at it. This isn't, this isn't exactly what the people at the hospital have floated to us, but it's something very, it's something very similar. We reestablished Union, and I think they were planning on putting the multifamily building right back where the hospital was in some of their like really early drawings, but this is sort of the, this is something of what the hospital folks were trying to get at with their initial thoughts. So we just diagrammed it up for you. So you see in the middle picture on top, in the lower-left, you have a couple examples there of that kind of courtyard in the middle of all the townhouses. On the top-left picture, you have that large townhouse building with parking underneath. So you have parking and then the townhomes on top. And then on the bottom-right, you kind of see a scheme where there's an alley with parking underneath the townhome. So it exists. It's not a dream made up by some architects when they put these together. They really were looking at different options and things that were out there. So because there's so much information here, this is why I was saying I would give this presentation to everybody with forums and be able to have them sit at home and kind of dig through it and give their thoughts on each of the slides, whether it be the architecture or the forums, and, you know, maybe you're okay with this, but there's some things you would want to change, or, you know, maybe you think none of these are good and you'd want to start back from the drawing board. So we can have a little bit of discussion now, but obviously, we'll give everybody time to kind of sleep on this and get back to us so we can get this information to the consultants. So I don't know if you want public comment tonight?
My thought, my only thought was that you could throw out the high-density one right away, but...
One or two, or both?
The high-density one?
There were two, so there was, yeah, so this is the first high-density?
Yeah, both of them.
And then this is the one with the raised courtyard?
Right.
So...
That was two-hundred-and-forty units approximately, you said?
Sorry?
They were two-hundred-and-forty units, the high-density?
Yeah, we didn't count for sure. I mean, you'd have to multiply it out, so this one would be what, there's, so six and five-eleven, so it'd be potentially eighty-eight if there was eight in each building, and then one-forty in the multifamily. I mean, this would get you up around probably two-eighty.
So is that a number to discuss? You know, how many units the city would like to have, or how much the infrastructure could handle, those kind of things?
Infrastructure-wise, I think, I mean, for infill, we have it down here. I mean, almost anything, because the hospital's such a big user of water, basically anything you put here that we could put there unless it was something really crazy. There's crazier than this. If you did something really crazy, there might be an issue, but I'm pretty sure everything's going to be awash.
Traffic would be another one to...
Yeah. So Union Avenue is a state road, and so is Revolution, so both those would require state highway review before they could do stuff here. They're normally looking at access permits, and they wouldn't necessarily, they may not need access off the road, but they'd still want to look at these things. I don't know the extent of where their comments could go. As far as the city's concerned, I can say that we're driving this process. There's not a number that's been put out there, like, you know, if we have a hundred and fifty, that'll make us break even for such-and-such fund, or, you know, there's not been any of that talk. The whole discussion, the whole discussion really has been that the hospital folks said when they were, when they knew they were going to sell this and do something else, that whatever they put here would follow our zoning code. And so what they've approached us with does not follow our zoning code. And so we decided that, you know, maybe what our zoning allows now isn't, it could be better, but it could be worse, but it should be driven by us. So that's sort of the, that's the approach on this, is that we need to make something that works for the city. So these different diagrams are sort of what we've taken from the listening sessions. So we've, you know, the medium-density, we reestablished Lodge Lane, we reconnect Union with similar-sized houses, we reconnect Washington in a similar density. So, you know, we have a lot of those things, you know, in the medium-density one, we lose a little bit, well, I guess in this one, I don't know if you're able to reestablish Lodge and Lane. Yeah, so in this first one you can, and the second one, it's gone again. So we took, you know, but we were trying to take in a lot of these scenarios, information that was given to us in the other stakeholder meetings and at that listening session, and trying to put those in, and then saying, you know, like, you know, what do you think about this? Is the medium too much? Or, you know, is the medium too much? Or is this too many houses? Is there not enough housing choice? So, you know, we're just kind of really trying to still like get ideas so we can come to like, so the ultimate goal, we have three alternatives that would be presented to the mayor and council, and eventually we would get to sort of, you know, kind of one path forward that would give us this baseline, whatever that looks like, and then have some ultimate goal that they could get to, whatever that looks like, and then start figuring out what we need to do that's best for the city to get there and see if we can do it.
I would think that it would not be harmful to discuss or to try to come up with some criteria for number of units that the city would like to see here. I mean, that would be one way of putting guardrails on the process. Certainly, you know, looking at infrastructure and those kind of things so that if it really came down to it, what would be the criteria for establishing a number? And that would, to me, that would help everyone decide what would happen.
Anybody have the thoughts on any, anything concerning like the look of this? I mean, as far as, on any of these, is there anything anywhere that you'd like to see or not see?
I think that keeping the parking structure is important. I know that they put a lot of effort into making sure it was secure when it was constructed. So I would like to see that remain as a source of, you know, helping with our, any type of overflow traffic we might need or for the exist, whatever is put into place in the area, the Nine Acre area. I would also rather see a structure that could be useful, a multi-generational facility, for instance, a YMCA or something where all different levels of family could interact, there'd be some activities available, just something other than more housing, because we have a hospital leaving and bringing more families in without healthcare is not a good direction to go in, in my perspective.
Okay. Let us ask a few more questions if we could.
Be able to.
Yeah, and then you guys can speak too. Did we do an analysis of what either, what's the existing zoning, R O?
R O, yeah.
Did we do a massing type of diagram of what R O looks like or what R B would look like here? Because that's kind of a baseline for...
Yeah, I mean, so that, I mean, I think, this is R O. I mean, this is what R O would allow. R O only allows single-family duplexes and townhouses. Technically, they could put all townhouses as of right, multifamily wouldn't be allowed. If all this, so the hospital, their real estate consultant asked why we didn't just switch all this to R B?
Right.
And that's because multifamily's allowed in R B, and that was taken out of the R O district. So, I mean, I guess that's part of the question. Would, is it important to consider for this group multifamily? And then, like Ed said, we could figure out the number of units, but do we want to see multifamily here?
Well, I would just say, I'll just comment on that, is R B is the densest zoning in the city, correct?
Yeah, that's right.
And we have R B zoning now way up on Bully Rock Parkway, so in the Cyan Hill development. So it would seem to make sense that you would have R B in what's already the densest area of the city, as opposed to a green space, by the way, with where you're putting in R B. So just for sake of consistency, I think it'd be worth just seeing, well, I guess you have some examples here, but if you tied it directly to what it would be under R B, then that's, you know, a reasonable basis for comparison. Parking, you know, I just noticed that in looking at also the Cyan Hill, and that's something that's, we've been looking at, ladies and gentlemen, so that's fresh on my mind anyway. Three parking spaces per unit, especially for a condo, seems excessive. And the trend around the country is to reduce parking, and, you know, if you have a one-bedroom apartment, it's not tied to bedrooms or anything?
No, it's for new development, new residential development, it's three spaces per spot if you're building anything more than three units. And I was told recently when discussing that, that that was one way that the city controls density.
Yeah, and it also just increases paving too.
It's all paving.
It's all paving. So I would question that, and I would say, especially if you're to retain the garage, then you're really duplicating. But I would look towards a, especially if you're going to put a mix of housing types in, I would look for parking based on maybe bedroom count rather than just a blanket, because it just eats up the landscape. I think the, is it the northern section, the one, that little triangle, the little rectangle?
The light blue one?
Yeah, that's in the coastal zone, I believe.
It's in the critical area, but it's in the, it's intensely-developed area, so it's pretty liberal what you could put there, but between...
But you'd have to do a lot of mitigation.
Between the mitigation that would be required and the stormwater requirements, it would be difficult. It's not insurmountable, but I think here it's showing four houses. I mean, we usually require dry wells for that. I mean, it would be, I think it'd be manageable, but I mean, yeah, it would require mitigation.
Yeah, so that, I would, there's a hierarchy of massing that you could do here, and I think that would probably be the lowest, given it's in the critical area. And to my mind, Union, there's already some hot, some level of density along Union, also beautiful old stately homes. But there's, and I could see even having a certain scale along Union that's consistent with the stately homes, and maybe if you're going to put something a little bit more dense on either side of Lodge Lane, that makes, might make some sense.
Yeah, we, yeah, they show in all these, basically Union is reestablished, it's the same in all these, and then you can kind of see that dark blue building. So here you have something smaller on Lodge Lane, and then here they're showing kind of a larger dark blue form, I think that says ground-floor retail residential unit. So, yeah.
Yeah, and I think we're leaving room for some retail or, you know, is really appropriate. You could have a nice restaurant up here, and, or some other uses that people have been clamoring for, and especially if you're adding new housing units.
Right.
Then that creates the opportunity that. Certainly keeping, reestablishing Lodge Lane and those streets, I would say, is very important. You don't want to do a super-block type of development. You do want to keep it within an urban scale, Havitt Grace urban scale, and maintain those senses of connections. I think you could even do it this way in the plan too, where you have a series of internal walkways between lots that could add a lot of character to it, and then have internal public spaces. It doesn't have to be a courtyard on top of a garage, but even on the lower-density schemes where you have public spaces within each block to create a little more character, and, you know, outside places for people. And then the housing, I think, Ed, I agree with you, there has to be an objective basis for determining what the number, and the type of units. And we haven't done our housing analysis as part of the comprehensive plan, and there's, it might reveal a need for certain types of housing. And this is the one spot in town where you could accommodate different types of housing. So I think we have to be very open-minded to that possibility and how that would shake out. And I think it'd be really even premature to try to put that number on it until we go through the comprehensive plan of studying housing, because this, to me, this is completely tied within the overall comprehensive plan, and it can't be looked at in isolation. All right, that was all my comments.
Thank you.
Do you want to open it up for...
Sure, we could give public comments for now.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so whoever would like to speak, if you'd come to the microphone and identify yourself, please. Your address.
My name's Kathleen Lee, 314 Bourbon Street, downtown Havitt Grace Historic District. I'm also the vice-chair of the Historic Preservation Commission. I would like to, first of all, put in my two cents about the garage. I volunteered at the hospital for over ten years now. They have closed off the upper part of the garage because it's structurally unsafe. That garage is held together, I swear to God, with baling tape and duct tape. It's not, I don't think it's going to be part of our equation to have that garage in there, and I don't think that was brought forth at our first meeting that we had at the Opera House. They have closed off, if you go under there, there's the first level, you go partway up the second level, and it's completely blocked off because it's structurally unsafe. So I think we need to remove the parking garage from this plan. It's not feasible, unless we build a whole new parking garage. It's not feasible to have the parking. Number two, I'd like to address parking in person. I live on Bourbon Street in the 300 block. We have one family on our street that has four cars. They have two in their driveway and two on the street. A number of our other people that live on our street have multiple cars, more than two. We really do need to address the parking because it is rather crucial. Everybody thinks, oh, the perfect house only has two cars or maybe only one car, but unfortunately, that's not the case in Havitt Grace. A lot of people have multiple cars, and we really do need to address the parking. I like the low-density. I'd like to see some single-family homes on Union that match the other single-family homes there. Even if they're multifamily, I'd like to have them be detached with some room around them. The other plan seems fine, except we really don't want a bunch of apartments, mixed-in-apartment-type buildings with eight units or something like that, especially if we can't accommodate the parking for that. If we could have on Washington Street perhaps more detached houses, they could be multifamily, we're not opposed to that, but I would really like to see, you know, something for the parking if we're going to be having multiple units. And basically, that's all I got to say right now.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else?
I just want to add quickly, Kathy, I appreciate you bringing forward the information about the upper section of the parking. I was under the impression that, you know, how it was built was sound, but I didn't realize that there was an area that's been closed off, so thank you.
Yeah, just to go on record, we did discuss that with the hospital group, and I was told that they don't allow parking up there because it's really hot in the summer. So when I asked, I did approach them about any issues up there, why the third floor wasn't being used, and they said it's just, there's no cover and the sun beats down on cars. Mm-hmm. Yeah.
But we shouldn't take the word of anybody in this room.
Right. Yeah, I'm just, yeah, I just want to make sure that I was on the record of what the, the hospital is saying why they weren't, why it wasn't being used.
Okay.
So in other words, consultant engineer?
Well, uh, I don't know that it's us to determine that. I think with parking, um, requirements that we have in the code, we should, that, that'll work itself out.
Yeah, they'll have to fix it or they will, they'll be fine with what they can do. Or yeah, I mean, they'll have to figure, they'll just have to meet our parking requirements.
Yeah. Or prove that it's sound and the number of spaces and all that. So that, I think that will, will take care of itself if we. But the parking, the parking requirement will be a key part of this whole thing as far as this, the city having control over what's built and what's allowed for parking. I don't know that you could, um, dictate the number of cars that a, a unit's allowed to own or have. But, uh, what's done elsewhere is always my, uh, question, you know, what, what, uh, what are, what are other places like this doing?
Right. Yeah. I mean, our, our consultants asked if we could lower it to 1.3. The people at the hospital said in their experience, they were, um, they were doing one per bedroom in areas like this. So, I mean, the, the industry standard is much lower. But, I mean, it's, it's, um, it's problematic because when you, when you talk in planning about industry standard and if you think about it like on a, on a curve, I mean, most of the information is coming from the cities that have the most population, which have more opportunities to, to park. So, I mean, um, you know, like San Francisco, just, I, I think, or parts of Portland have, um, have a zero parking requirement for, for development in their areas. But they allow on-street parking and it's metered and, you know, there's parking garages and parking lots. And there's just a lot of options where, um, if you use that of our average, that zero kind of skews, you know, our issue, which is, you know, you, you've seen in places where in Greenway Farms that, um, don't have basements, have a two-car garage. They fill the garage with stuff that would normally go into a basement. And then you got four cars and you have two on the street in narrow lanes. So, I mean, small town and suburban, um, issues are different, but three is high for, for anywhere. So maybe, maybe there's a way to, um, there, there's ways to control density and then also, um, lower parking standards.
Yeah.
Many places are reducing those because it discourages housing. That's, that's the whole point.
Yeah. I, I read something from like 15, 20 years ago that it was somewhere between like $800 and $2,000 per parking spot that you have to create. So, you know, if, I don't know, 180 was our number, that's 540 times 2,000. I mean, you're, you're getting up there, $100,000 just for parking. And that all gets passed down to.
Portland and San Francisco would be the last two cities I would want to emulate right now.
But, but that's what, you know, but when you hear about these trends, I don't disagree. But when you hear about these trends, they're like, you know, everybody's really reducing, you know, and they have zero here and zero there or one per bedroom. But, you know, like even the, the people, the hospital are working with, they're from, they're doing a lot of work in Baltimore. And they're just now kind of getting to more, um, smaller city and suburban development. So, um, you know, their, their experience is very different from, from what's here. But I said, when you look at the, at all that stuff sort of shifting, um, you always hear from the, the big cities. I'm not, I'm not so sure that parking standards are being reduced in, in rural. I mean, we're considered rural in rural cities. I don't, I don't know.
I don't either, but.
I know they're not three.
Okay.
Good.
Anyone else, um, like to speak?
Look, I'm, I'm going to put all this online. I'll put up, um, I said, I'll, I'll put up some kind of Google form, um, where, you know, each of these major slides, there can, there can be some discussion. I'll leave a, a question at the end for additional comments and give everyone some kind of like, you know, timeline to get back to me.
You, you mentioned, um, you know, the design part of that. I mean, I don't, I didn't see anything really ugly that offended me in those different buildings that you showed. I, I know that there is as much variation in designs as there are people in the world. I mean, it could be totally different and how, you know, beauty is in the eyes of the beholder. And I get, I'd just have to see it to, we would like it to fit the general, um, appearance of our city already. I could say that, I'd, I'd say.
No, that makes sense. Um, we, we don't have any way to control, uh, architecture currently in our code. Unless you come in for a site plan review and then there's just very, there's very few, few standards. There's not a lot. Um, we are looking into architectural design guidelines, um, and having those done. But I, I don't think that they would be very rigid. You know, and I think they'd be something more than guidelines, but I, I think it would be more focused on, um, discussions I've had. They want to more focused on the style of the building and not so much materials and, and that sort of stuff. But again, trying in some way to have them pick enough elements to make them fit. But we're ways away from there. Um, but, but that is the direction it seems that, that we would go in.
It's very hard to legislate good design. And sometimes when you try to do something, whoops, sorry, historic, it just looks schlocky at the end. So, uh, you, you do have to be careful with that.
Yeah. I mean, we, we spoke to, um, when we were doing the, when we were choosing a consultant, we had two architecture firms come down and, you know, part of their bid was for architecture design guidelines. I mean, this was potentially going to be something that they would do. And it was just interesting hearing one of their takes on it was saying that, you know, for, for some of the housing in the area, the only thing that's really historic about it is that was the way that they were just building houses at the time. But there's nothing, that there's nothing special about it. You can go kind of anywhere in the region. That's just the way that you build houses. And if you kind of take that, you know, 50 years from now, something that we build today, we might look back at and say, that's just how we were building houses in 2023. I, I don't know. Um, there, there has been studies where, um, there were homes that were being built a certain way in the, in the seventies. I forgot where it was. I'd have to find it. And at the time, they were showing that in the newspaper, a lot of people were complaining about the new developments. But they were kind of like the hot thing right now, like people were trying to move into those, those seventies houses. So like over time, uh, designs that people don't like end up becoming nostalgic, or at least for, for that era it did in that study. So, um, there's a lot to say about that.
Well, certain things you can definitely control, like having a consistent street frontage.
Right.
It's consistent setbacks to the rest of the community.
Yep.
And, and height and, and certain things like that.
On Washington Street, we talked about covered porches.
Yes, porches.
Yeah. So, I mean, that, that was one of the big things they noticed there.
Access, where do you park, those kinds of things. You know, the consistency with, you know, Harvard de Grace is what's great. You have these lanes which are natural parking areas.
Right.
And you keep the front without driveways and front porches and lawns, which is the classic new urbanism.
Yep.
Kind of. So those things you can do without necessarily dictating the design too closely. And I think those, those are really, those are the things that give, uh, an area a certain character.
Okay. Anything else?
I'll get this online and I'll send an email out to everybody and let them know that it's up.
I just wanted to, um, ask, is it, um, certain that it's going to go in the direction of residential housing?
Yeah. I mean, it, it, it looks that way now. I mean, it's really, it's out of the city's hands. I mean, uh, it's a private property. So they're going to sell it to the person that excites them the most, which is probably money. Um, so, so, I mean, they, maybe they would have other reasons for it. But, um, yeah, I mean, they're going to give it to the highest bidder. They have mentioned that they want to keep a, a community health presence here. They haven't said what that, what that was or for sure, how they would do it. Um, and they're still working through that. So they're not ready to commit to that. The city is in administrations in regular discussions with, with, um, with the hospital folks, not just on this, but just generally what's going to go on there. So, um, there has been an open dialogue. I know there was some bad blood in the past about way things that have, have went down. I don't, I don't know if I want to comment on the, the quality of the relationship that I, I have that knowledge, but I, I know there's open communication. So that's always good.
Yeah. I think everybody does need to, um, you know, have, recognize some economic reality here too. And that while the city can control a lot, um, just the cost of removing that hospital is going to be astronomical. And, uh, you know, I'm sure the university system has certain economic expectations that are probably reasonable. Um, so there's, I think we have to be realistic in that regard too.
Yeah, I would agree. And just on that note, the city is, um, the mayor wrote a letter last year in support of the hospital seeking funding from, um, I think it might be Housing and Community Development or it might be Economic Development. Not sure which, um, which, which department, but it was under the last, under the Hogan administration. And they'll continue working with the hospital to seek that money. Those are part of the discussions. So the plan from the beginning, whether it happens, you know, how it actually goes out. But it's always been said that if, you know, this didn't redevelop right away, that their hospital building would still be torn down and this would be a, an open maintained area until, um, time came that everything worked out.
And yeah, one, one more thing I would just say too is, um, you know, housing's good and the type of housing is important, but the hospital did provide a community benefit, no question. And so we should be open minded in terms, and it's not going to be another hospital, but we could, should be open minded in terms of what other kind of community benefits could accrue from this. And it might be totally, it's not healthcare at all. It might, um, Kami was suggesting YMCA or some other things. But there certainly could be community benefits that could come from this. And we should, we should keep an open mind about that too.
Good.
But so Tim, when you send this around, if you could just highlight which one you think most approximates the RB zoning?
Okay.
And the RO zoning. So at least people will have, uh,
Yeah, okay.
A basis for comparison again, against what's currently allowed in the old town part of city.
Yeah. RO would be something between this and this. And then RB would be townhouses, townhouses instead of multifamily, or instead of those multifamily. But I'll, um.
Well, and.
Did that follow all the RB rules though? I don't know.
As far as the density or?
Yeah, just all of it. I don't know. Yeah, I don't know. It's in the RB zoning, but.
It did. I know they, as far as the height and passing and.
Oh, okay. Okay, okay, okay. I wa, I wasn't sure. I'd, I'd heard, I heard different things on that one. So.
And downtown is RB too, right?
Yeah.
But, and how did, uh, what is St. James Towers and those, how, what are those? How do they get approved? Cause they're clearly high-rise.
I'd have to, I'd have to look to see when they were approved. If they were before 1982.
They're predated in zoning.
Yeah.
Did it? Okay. All right.
That was common.
Yeah. Uh-huh.
That's a good question.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
Anything else? Do, what do we want to do next, Tim? Do we want to, you want to go into our discussion of these?
Yeah, we'll do that. I made another presentation for that one. Uh, if you guys want a break, we can. Uh, if not, we can just get right into it.
I'm good to go into it.
Blind here. We'll, we'll be sort of quick, I hope. Um, so we talked a little bit about open space. So, um, there's a couple of different questions I have on, on, um, on this one that I'll get to in the end. But I just, I'll sort of, um, present everything and let you know. In front of you, I've given you some, some definitions of, of what we have and what's available or what's, what's, um, in the other communities and in Har, in Hartford County and in Hartford County. So, um, I'll go through all this pretty quick here. So, um, our open space definition is, um, it's pretty vague. It's in 20513. Maybe vague is the wrong word. It's, um, it, it allows a lot of things to be open space. So then in our subdivision regulations, um, we further discuss open space, but we say it's, um, open space only has to be provided as required under the zoning code. It distinguishes between passive and active open space, uh, that those need to be denoted on, uh, any subdivision plans. It allows for phasing. Um, so, uh, when a certain percentage of units are, are completed, then active open space has to be available for those, for those residents. And then I think if there's over 50 units, you can kind of phase, um, the, the open spaces. It, um, as the availability of open space for those residents has to be easily and safely accessible. Certain materials required for, for walkways and any changes to open space on plans is required to have, um, is required to have planning commission approval. So then, um, it says that, that open space is only required under, as required under 205. The only place that we mention anything about open space are regulations for, uh, townhouse projects under 209 F6. And, um, that says it's only for townhouses. And it sets the percentages that you have to, and that's, and then a certain percentage of that total open space has to be set aside for active, but where it's only for townhouses. So that's how, how our code is now. So this is our current definition. Um, it is on the second page at the top. Uh, so you can look at that later, but just to go through this here, these are the important parts. So, um, it's the open space according to our definition is intended to provide light air view and/or quality or general appearance of openness. It's designed for, uh, environmental privacy, um, and scenic purposes. So privacy and open space are kind of contradictory, at least as I read it. Then it says what open space may include. And it says lawns, active and passive recreation, man-made lakes designed to be attractive, developed amenity, but which may also be used for stormwater management. So this is something pretty common I've, I've ran into where they'll count, like you'll see a development come in. They'll count the stormwater pond as open space and we'll say that's not open space. And then they'll put in like five benches and then it becomes open space. So it, it is, it is pretty common. But the thing here that, that sticks out for me is, is lawns and privacy. So it, it seems that we have this really expansive definition of what open space is. But then we also try to reel that in into what is active and passive recreation, which is normally active and passive open space, which wouldn't include lawns. And then, you know, that we're, we're not allowing stormwater ponds unless stormwater ponds are available to the public. So there just seems to be some, some contradiction here in, in how we define open space, which makes it difficult to sort of, um, ask a designer what kind of open space they're, they're providing. And then again, at the bottom, it says that, um, that there's these, uh, common terms that go along with open space, such as dedicated open space and usable open space. These never show up again and I never read them anywhere else. So, um, I think, I think it's just a, an old definition. I'm not really sure what they were trying. It is an old definition. It hasn't been changed since 1982. I'm not sure where they were, uh, going with this when they, they came with it, if they were just trying to discuss. Anyway, we'll, we'll get to that part in the end, but just sort of odd. So in, um, in contrast, you have the Hartford County open space definition. And here I think is what you normally see as open space. You see this in our definition. You just see all these other added things in our definition. But open space here says be accessible to all residents of the development and be accessible to the general public if accepted by a public agency. Shall not include required lot area of dwelling units. So when they're talking about how you count open space, they're not including lawns. Where ours, we just, we kind of throw everything in the kitchen sink in our definition. And then try to sort of peel back what, we sort of define recreation separate from open space. This sort of gets rid of all those extra things and says you have active and passive. City of Aberdeen, um, it says they do not include individual building lots, uh, set aside for use and enjoyment of residents, visitors and other persons, um, or, uh, buildings that aren't related to recreational activities. And Bel Air has a couple of definitions. So developed open space, they'll be designed to provide active recreational facilities to serve the residents of the development. And in the other, um, their, their full definition, it says it's reserved for public or private use or enjoyment or for the use and enjoyment of owners and, um, and occupancy of land adjoining or neighboring such open space. So in all of these definitions, you either see that they're not including lots or that it, even if it's public or private, it has to be able to be enjoyed by everybody in the development or by the public at large. And I think we've probably been requiring subdivisions to provide open space in that way when we look at, at subdivisions and when this, this body approves the subdivisions. But the way that we define it, when we're so open and we include lawns and all those things, it, it's contrary to, um, what the generally accepted definition of open space is.
You're thinking that lawns, people's. You're thinking that lawns, people's private lawns would be included within our definition of open space?
It, it is included by words, but I'm not sure how we've been approving subdivisions. But it definitely is in here. Open space may include but shall not be limited to lawns.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's black and white.
It doesn't say private lawns.
That's true. I guess I never really looked at the, but on the other, yeah, it says, on the other hand, that's what confused me. It said that intended to provide light air view and/or quality and general appearance of openness and is designed for environmental privacy, recreational, scenic purposes. So, there's that, that piece that says privacy, and then later it says shall not be limited to lawns. And I was thinking, does, does this mean lots? Has, and I guess that's maybe a question for you, Ed, since you've been here for the longest. When reviewing subdivisions in the past for purposes of calculating open space area, how is that defined? Were you, you weren't considering lawns, I suppose.
Well, when you, when you put on the end, there's something about for the use and enjoyment of the general public, to me, that would eliminate the private lawns part of it.
Is that in our definition?
Well, didn't I see that?
Yeah, that's in, that's in, yeah, I'm not sure. That might be in one of the other ones. If you look under current division, the top one on page two, I don't think ours, I mean, that's what's sort of, sort of weird about ours, is we talk about lawns and privacy, and then we also talk about all these publicly available things. But I'm not sure how we've, I'm not sure how we've counted it in the past when we've reviewed subdivisions.
I'm not sure either. But that would be a key distinction, I would think.
Right.
Whether it's private property or public.
So, I guess that comes to the next question. Do we, we should amend, should we amend this definition to make it, to make it clear, probably what we've already been doing?
Yeah, I think this is a very, you know, confusing definition, really, and that it needs work, for sure.
Okay. And is there anything, anything specific in that definition that we, we want to see? Because this will affect new incoming development as, as it's coming in. Again, I, I think we probably have already been reviewing subdivisions under a way where we weren't including lawns and that sort of thing, but we have to let the designers know now that, you know, this information has to be provided on the, on the plans when they're submitted, and that they have to indicate where there's active and passive space. Just wondering if there's anything from, from this group, any suggestions?
Yeah, I, I think we have to look beyond the specific definition and look a little more holistically, and what kind of results we want to see. And first of all, there's two kinds of open space in my mind. One is natural resource open space, which is, should be protected already under our various regulations with the sustainable landscape, sustainable with the forest conservation ordinance, with detention basins. All that, to me, falls into natural open space. And that should be set aside as part of every subdivision and site plan application. So, you don't necessarily have an arbitrary percentage or number that you put on that. That's a product of site plan analysis. So, it could be, I mean, you could have a site where it's pretty much everything is forested wetland. So, you, but you wouldn't want to put a arbitrary number on that. You know, most or all of that should be preserved. And then, but what I find is lacking, though, in, so that could be managed through, you know, proper site plan and subdivision review. What I find is lacking, though, is, is the active recreation component and open space component. And particularly in the subdivision regulations, it says, it talks about active recreation, but it doesn't, there's no requirement. The only one is, I think, in the, the townhouse.
That's right.
Section that you mentioned. So, and I'm not saying how you quantify that right now, but there should be a provision in, you know, every subdivision. You know, I'll, I'll look at, say, the Cyan Hill Estates, which I thought was a bit of a missed opportunity, because, you know, but even the concept plan for Cyan Hill Estates talks about while there's open space set asides, there should also be pocket parks that are developed comprehensively with, throughout the community. So, and I'm not sure, and you look at concepts like new urbanism, where there's a common, there would be a common area, an open space. It could be very passive. It could be like a town square kind of thing. Or you could have, or it could be ball fields, certainly walking and biking trails. All that could and should be part of the subdivision for the people who live there, and that actually connects through to other subdivisions. So, there's a continuity of active open space. There's a continuity of natural open space. And, you know, and some of that is site-specific. I don't know how to put a number or a quantity or a specific requirement on the active open space, but I would certainly distinguish that from the natural open space. And work to find ways to incorporate active open space within development.
How about, you know, maintained versus unmaintained?
Well, yeah, I think it's usually thought of as natural open space, or there's other terms of art for that. And then there's, then there's active open space, which is programmed, yes.
Dedicated open space, to me, that means it's, if it's dedicated, it's not private, for one thing, right? And usable open space, to me, that would be something that, you know, the, the public would have access to, to do something with.
Yeah. And sometimes you, you can combine them both. So, Bully Rock has forest retention areas, but has trails that go through them. So, you know, you can do both within the same space, but-
Improved versus unimproved, maybe?
Yeah, yeah, there is that. There's that kind of distinction, too. But I think we need to find a way. I think the natural preservation should be part of the natural, the subdivision approval process. If you have woodlands, if you have wetlands, if you require stormwater, that should be part of the, the site plan review. And then the question is what other stuff do you require of the developer, or do you desire from the developer, that people can actually use? That's not just their natural set aside. And I think, I don't know the answer to that, but I think there's two, two types, and we need to find a way to build in those kind of requirements.
To me, it would be hard for, as a developer, to, to know what you mean when you say it's all handled in this, the review process, which means whatever we think, whatever we want it to be.
No, I think it, I think it's all there. It's there, a lot of it's there right now. For instance, you have landscape sustainable ordinance that requires a preservation of woodlands with six-inch calipers or greater. Now, that's not always followed, but it should be. We also have the forest conservation ordinance, which kind of overlaps that, but has, you know, mitigation for any forest that's removed. We have state wetland ordinances. We have stormwater management. So, you know, I think a lot of that is there, and certainly developers should be able to read that and expect that. And we should, I think we could be more vigorous in our review enforcement of those as part of the comprehensive review of what we do, and not shuttle them aside for later review. But I, I think that's there, and we could, and anybody who reads the code should understand that and expect that. But what we don't really have is, all right, we also, though, want you to put in an open, a ball field, or we want you to put in tennis courts, or we want you to put in hiking trails, or we want you to put in a 10-foot-wide multimodal hike bike trail. We don't have anything specific that requires that. We just have a subdivision regulation that says it's there, but it doesn't say what it's supposed to be or how to get there. So, I think that's, that's what requires some extra work here.
I'll, I'll make some changes to the, to the definition and see where we put that in zoning, or how we do that in subdivision regulations, and I will send it to all of you for additional comment before we send it to the mayor and council.
Okay.
Yeah, I think Bel Air tries to make that distinction probably better than some of the others.
Okay. Good. Thank you on that. And then, the last thing. So, we talked, talked about the residential office district. So, the RO district is the, the hospital and the surrounding area. So, we mentioned that this has been an area that's in flux for some period of time. So, with that changing, we've had requests of people coming in saying, you know, hey, I want to, I want to live in someplace that I just bought. I'm going to live on the second floor, and on the first floor, I have a couple of business partners, and we want to do X, Y, and Z. And a lot of times, it's not allowed. We're just allowing basically doctor's office, dentist's office, things that were bed and breakfast, things that were in line with the hospital, or bed and breakfast, and then, and that was it. So, what I was hoping to do was to add this definition of personal service shops. So, personal service shops are allowed in RB district and commercial districts. So, again, somebody, I'll get to that in a second, but we received a request for mixed use for a building on Union. The owner will live on premises, and they wanted to have a day spa, which is considered a wellness center. The wellness center fits under our definition of personal service shop.
A day spa? Is that what you said?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah.
I'm not sure what that is.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not exactly sure either. They said like some kind of place where you come during the day and get spa treatment. There'd be some refreshments afterwards. Yeah, I don't think it's one of those establishments, but you never know. Broad category that should require Board of Appeals conditional use approval. So, the definition of a personal service shop includes barber shops, beauty shops, shoe repair shops, laundry and dry cleaning pickup shops, licensed massage therapy, nails and hair salons, spas, and wellness centers. So, because it's such a broad definition, and we still want to be able to control what's going there, and we're going to have some bigger zoning changes, the thought was to allow this as conditional use, which would require approval by the Board of Appeals. They would have to meet the 10 findings that are in chapter 2517B. And if they were found to be harmful, then they wouldn't be allowed to get the conditional use permit, or conditions could be placed on them so that they would be okay. So, we could say the type of spa, a day spa, or the type of services that they could provide, the hours that they were open. All those things are potential conditions we could put on it. So, I just wanted to approach all of you with that, and see if there was any issue with adding in personal service shops as a conditional use in the RO district.
That seems like a very broad category.
I didn't want to put in something so specific just for this one place, and then tomorrow, somebody else comes in, and I'm back here with you guys saying that somebody wants to put in a nail salon, or whatever it is, you know?
Tattoo parlor.
I think it's going to borderline on residential business, and it's going to, you know, take away from the downtown area.
Potential take from downtown? Okay. So, then you, you would, so I guess as a conditional use, that's one of the things that we could, we could look at to see if it affects the economic vitality of downtown. Or would you just say that this isn't something that you would want there?
There's already a similar place. I'm not sure what street it's on. I know when you go down, when we go down by the library, it's off either to, it's a wellness shop, definitely, and there's a house above it. And that was already preexisting before this came in, and I'm not sure how often it's used or utilized, but I do know it's been there since I've lived here, the last six years. But it blends in. It's not like obtrusive. It's just a little sign. And, but I'm not sure, like I said, how often it's utilized by residents.
So, it's also on Union? Is that, I'm guessing?
I'm not familiar with the street. I'm seeing it in my mind's eye. When you go down towards the library, it's on the right hand, left-hand side.
Okay.
It could be Stoke Street?
I'd have to go look, yeah.
I'll have to look it up again. But, but it is, it's exactly what you're describing right now.
Yeah, for some of these things, I don't, I don't know. I mean, you can't, I don't, I don't know that we can not, we can stop competition. You know, if somebody builds a place, I mean, somebody buys a place on Union, and they decide they want to do something that their neighbor's doing, if they both work, great. If the one person's idea doesn't work, great. I mean, I guess that's the whole point of competition. I don't know that zoning should, should regulate competition necessarily, but it's up to you guys.
If you try to use zoning to limit things like that, it always seems to backfire to me. And then, you know, market forces are at play here, too. I don't know how, you know, there's no good way to cover everything, so to speak.
Yeah, that's why I was thinking that, you know, we, we have these old definitions and things in our, our code. This one was the thing that was most open, but maybe would fit. And then if there was something that, that wouldn't fit, we would, you know, still have the opportunity at Board of Appeals to sort of limit it.
I agree that, you know, these things should be revisited periodically to make sure our definitions are good and up to date and relevant.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of stuff in our, in our code that was, I've seen a lot of definitions that were put in our code, and then they're not actually placed in any zoning district. Like, for some reason, we, like, we defined like 15 or 20 new types of businesses, like check cashing places or something like that. And then, our zoning code says that if it, it said before that if it wasn't, if it wasn't in any other district, it was allowed as conditional use in the commercial district. But it was like we defined it, but then never stuck it anywhere, for whatever reason.
Licensing requirement in the city?
For spas and-
Or a business, a business license?
No, no, at the county level. I mean, they have to register with the comptroller and have a trader's license. And then, we usually don't give a use and occupancy permit unless they have a trader's license. But we don't, we don't have a specific business licensing agreement. We just wouldn't allow them to occupy the building unless they met all their, their other requirements.
You know, wellness center is just, is a common euphemism for a cannabis dispensary.
That's completely regulated differently. They, that couldn't be here. And we have specifics in our code about cannabis. But we don't allow, we don't allow recreational right now. I mean, it's not been specifically put where that goes, so it would only be in our industrial district now. But we, we do define medical cannabis, but you need a specific license, and that wouldn't be allowed in the RO district right now, anyway.
Yeah, I know we did that.
Yeah.
But I, I wouldn't want to introduce an ambiguity to that, if wellness is not really defined, a wellness center.
Well, wellness center isn't really well-defined, but cannabis is. So, I think, I think if they came in with cannabis, they couldn't say that it's a wellness center if it specifically was defined some other way. You know what I mean?
Yeah, maybe. And the other question, why are we doing this for one person? Why aren't we just looking at all the uses in the RO district and doing this as part of this whole other exercise?
Right, because we have to wait for the comp plan really to be done to do that. But we, we've had a request. So, the idea was that, it was a request from one person, but that this personal service shop would open up potentially for, for anybody who, who could take advantage of it. But we can't make really any, any wholesale changes until we finish the comprehensive plan.
Right. So, why, they could wait till then?
Um, maybe. I don't know. I don't know what their financial situation is or what's going on, but they made, they made the request.
All right. Well, they, they bought the place knowing what the zoning was, so the other thing they could do is they could go for a use variance, too, right?
Uh, yeah, they would have to show a hardship, which I, I don't know how they would show that, but I guess that would be up to them to show.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just a little wary of, I mean, it might be fine, and- and certainly need to accommodate changes, especially without the hospital there. But I'd rather do it in a more comprehensive way than do a one-off.
I agree.
Timmy?
So this place I was mentioning, it's called Spa Beliza. It's on 205 South Stoke Street. And it is a service industry type, body waxing, eyelash extensions, manicure, pedicure, skin treatments, aromatherapy, face massage. So basically, body massage. So it is, it's got, it has the spa definition or the...
Wellness.
Yeah. We also have two other spas. One's on Franklin Ion Massage, and one's on Congress Par Excellence Day Spa. So, but the Spa Beliza, it looks to me like it's more in residential.
Yeah, I'd have to look at the zoning district. I don't know. I don't have the map in front of me to know, but...
I don't either, but that's what I was, wanted to just clear that up because I have seen, you know, what you're trying to describe.
Yeah.
It looks like it already exists.
Yeah, I mean, that's just the way it is, you know? If, if these things are allowed in the RB district, every building in the RB district could be a day spa. There's nothing stopping that from happening. So I don't know, thinking the opposite way, that we can say, you know, we shouldn't allow this in any other district because we don't want competition with existing businesses. I mean, if we're looking like downtown versus, you know, downtown versus, you know, Route 40, I think you make those big things, but I don't know if you can, you know, like block to block in a residential area, try to dictate businesses in that way. But I guess, I mean, but what you're saying, I think, probably fits in with what Chip's saying, is that this just needs to be looked at in a more...
Comprehensive.
Comprehensive approach, once the comprehensive plan's done. Alright, I will let...
Of course, part of this hospital thing.
Yeah, yeah, because it's part of that as well, so, good. I'll let them know that it won't be happening today.
Okay.
Good. I don't have anything else unless any of you do.
Okay. Everybody ready to call it a night? Sorry, Jim. Jim?
Fancy meeting you here.
Yeah. Yep. I didn't throw it away yet.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I'll, I'll get it to you tomorrow. I'll send it to you.
Stand adjourned, then.
Alright, alright. Good job, Ed.
If you'd have been here, you could have made a quorum.